Morning, everyone. We'll start today's meeting with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start off with the agenda approval. Is there any changes or additions?
Mr. Chair, we'll pull item 9A. I think you got an update from Eric yesterday about some of the paperwork not being complete in that application.
Ready? And with that, can I get a motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carried. Public input, any public input today? Doesn't appear to be any, all righty. We will move on to the number three, public notice redistricting.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we put a notice as required in the local newspaper and on the county website, asking if there was any public comment or input on the redistricting proposals. We did not receive any feedback, we did not have any inquiries, and we did not receive another redistricting proposal from the public. So, the ones in this packet are the ones that were developed in committee that I think that everybody had seen, and I sent these out after the last committee to all the Commissioners. And our intent today is just to review where we're at with this position. If you have minor questions, Jack is here, helped us develop the maps. We are planning, if there's more work to do, planning on doing that at the work session next week, and he'll bring his computer up and we can do some modeling and we can move things around. If you think that we're relatively ready to go, then we can just carry this forward to the 19th for a decision. Our deadline is April 26th, they have this submitted to the state.
Okay.
So, we've got a single plan where the primary change, well, we have the existing, we have the existing districts which demonstrate that we do not meet the 10% deviation rule. We have proposal number one, where essentially we flip-flop precincts one and two in the city of Park Rapids between Commissioner Districts two and Commissioner Districts three, and then we move Clay Township to Commissioner District four, and we are at less than a 4% deviation across the board with that plan. Plan number two leaves the city of Park Rapids the way that it was and reallocates elements of the townships over in that section, and we get to less than 10%, but we're over 5%. We have Plan Three, which shows Commissioner District One taking precinct number two in the city and Henrietta Township, and then reallocating the townships around that area, and that comes up with a deviation of less than 10%. And then number, number four is just a variation on that theme, where we've got Commissioner District One with precinct number two in Park Rapids and Henrietta Township, and that also meets the rule. Then we also included the blocks, which just had the numbers relative to the 2020 census numbers by the blocks. The, I'll go back to the top here, in the situations where we have the threshold, the 5% rule, wherever it's highlighted and read, that means that there's been a big enough shift in that district so that the Commissioner in that district would be up for election again this year. Remember that this year, we already have one, three, and five up for election because of the end of the term, so this one would show that, that there's no way, because of how short population District Two is, that it's not going to be up for election again this year. Well, that's, I'm wrong. Plan number two is one that shows that District Two wouldn't have to change.
Mr. Chair, I understand we're going to look at this at the work session so we can have lots of conversation, then. However, in just participating in what's happened with redistricting statewide with, you know, our representation, I would suggest that we would try do things that would be the least confusing to the public. And there is a plan here that gets us, you know, under the 5% plus, it doesn't involve a lot of shifts as far as the public going for the person that they're appointed with.
I agree, there's already enough, going to be enough confusion.
Uh huh.
With the hall seats and stuff like that.
Yeah, I have to get my map out. Looking at the state to figure out where my representation lies, not mine, but I mean my representative, what areas are going to cover. It's confusing. Yeah.
And when Commissioner Stacy here this morning too, it's kind of hard, I don't know if his opinions on any of these.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Yeah, in the, in the development of Plan One, as I, as I've discussed previously, in October, when we first got these numbers, we were looking and determining that if the city of Park Rapids would balance precinct one and precinct two, it would solve for less than 10% deviation without any changes. And when they did not do that, and they confirmed their precincts as they are, divided by Highway 71 is the division east and west for the city, that they were going to leave it that way, we had that information, and then as someone had mentioned, we didn't see this obvious solution previously because we weren't looking for it. Flipping those two precincts balanced two and three, which one was over, one was under. And then the further change of moving Clay Township from District Five to District Four is the one that brought us under four, under, under 4% variation for all of them, actually under 5% and actually under 4%, and that was a minor, minor change to do that, so. So that, all of that, we can, we can discuss through this, like I said, at the, at the work session next week, and then bring a plan forward on the 19th for approval.
Okay. Yeah, for me, one stands out for myself, but it barely affects me, so.
Yeah, I'm affected by number one, and I, I like the change. I keep the five townships I've had before, and just switching to City Park Rapids is not a big deal to me. Originally, I didn't know that the airport was part of City Park Rapids, but it is, so we meet that contiguous requirement.
Well, and I, and I looked at our current plan, and I just could not figure out how our current plan was contiguous, but it is by definition because of the way the city has their precincts defined, and that slim, narrow section along Highway 71 makes those two blocks contiguous. But in my mind, when you look at swapping those two precincts, it feels to me like they're much more contiguous because it's not just the, the narrow trunk of the highway, it's actually population.
Looking at the map, it even visibly looks more contiguous instead of the other one. The other one was stretching it.
Okay, then.
So, carry forward to the work session.
I believe so, consensus today. Good. All righty. Then, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll move to a poll. Thank you, Dave. And I will second if nobody else wants to.
Um, I, I should have probably, I just have a question on this.
Okay.
So, when I, when I looked at the cigarette and other tobacco product applications, I couldn't tell if, if we decide to move forward with an ordinance at a later date, that has nothing to do, they wouldn't have to come back for this, they would have to go through a permitting process if they desired to sell something else.
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
We're not doing anything now that precludes that, that change in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. On to county employee recognition. In Environmental Services, we have Jonathan Mortensen, began full-time position of GAS Specialist on March 28th, 2022. The Highway Department, we have Jed Nordin, Highway Engineer, Public Works Coordinator, and all-around nice guy, is recognized for 15 years of service, March 19th of 2022. Michael Platts, Assistant Shop Foreman, is recognized for three-plus years of service, from October 8th of 2018 to April 18th, 2022. And Jamie Eichsterhold began the full-time position of Social Worker, back there, all righty, welcome. Social Worker Adult Services on March 30th, 2022.
Mr. Chair, we have, we have Jonathan, GAS Specialist is here as well today.
All righty, and Jonathan.
Jed, go ahead, sit there.
Jed's got.
After 15 years, we still don't recognize him, so.
Yeah, I'm coming, coming all the way here from, from the big twin cities of St. Paul, Minneapolis here, you know, so.
Well, we won't hold that against you.
I hope not, I'm hoping to get to be familiar with the county and its people, and I hope to, you know, use my services to make a good impact sort of on operations and just to maybe, you know, so, thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
And if I may deviate just a little bit, this was a 4K under the consent agenda. I want, I would like to read it if I could, it's the Declaration for the National Telecommunications Week. I thought we could maybe get a little recognition there. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time requiring Sheriff, Police, Fire, and Emergency Medical Services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our deputy sheriffs, police officers, and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Hubbard County Sheriff's Office Communications Center, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our law enforcement, fire personnel, by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety dispatchers of Hubbard County Sheriff's Office Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fire, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their jobs in the past year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Hubbard County hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through the 16th of 2022 as National Telecommunications Week, and joins in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our country and citizens safe.
Thank you.
Okay, on to number six, Mississippi Headwaters Board. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Tim Terrell, Mississippi Headwaters Board. It's been a long hiatus for the last few years, but we had a great time to meet with some of you at our biennial conference, and we had a really good conference there. Normally, when I come speak to you, I, I say, "I'm Tim Terrell for the Mississippi Headwaters Board." We were established in 1980 for the, to relieve federal control over the Mississippi River, and then I go into some things that we've done. I just want to take that first sentence and expound on it. We made a video about the formation and history of the Mississippi Headwaters Board. I actually wanted to do it about five years ago, but I just waited for the opportunity. It appeared, and it really changed. We played it at the biennial conference, changed the whole culture of the, of the conference. So, I just want to play that for you now. It's kind of more of a conversation than it is an informative video, and then I just have a quick little follow-up after that, so enjoy.
Bob Lassard, who served in the Minnesota State Senate 26 years from 1978 to 2004, has been called a sly fox and the old trapper, but anyone who took him for granted was fooling themselves. During his first term, it was the result of his actions that the Mississippi Headwaters Board became a reality.
Never been in politics before, I'd just been elected, and I never, in hindsight, I never thought I could get this done. There's something about being a freshman senator, you think you can do stuff? I, in hindsight, I never would have done it, I would have thought it'd been impossible.
Known as a supporter of a clean environment, Bob's handshake was his word. He once told a reporter, "The thing that kept me going was protecting the rights of people who made Minnesota the state it is." The federal government and the state often come in and say, "We know best," but hunters and fishermen have been stewards of the environment forever, and protecting their rights is important. It was in that spirit that was behind Bob advocating and passing the legislation that made the management of the Mississippi Headwaters a reality.
It was tough. I, I don't think I went to bed, it was really emotional with me.
The cause of the concern of Bob Lassard and others in the region was the result of the enactment of the Federal Wild and Scenic Rivers Act in 1968, that had the intention of protecting the natural free-flowing rivers, including the first 400 miles of the Upper Mississippi River, which the government wanted to turn into a linear national park. But with the creation of a national park would come federal control, which would include the acquisition and condemnation of private property. Much like had been done in Voyager's National Park, Bob and others felt strongly that the Upper Mississippi would instead benefit from local control. But to stop federal government would take an outpouring of people living in the eight counties of northern Minnesota where the first 400 miles flowed.
I called all the counties together that were affected, and I said that if we don't get together and do it under local control, it'd be disaster.
For three years, Bob traveled throughout the region, rallying the local people.
I'd go to all the county boards, what we would do, every time the National Park Service would hold a hearing, I don't care if it be Aiken, it was, if it be Bemidji, if it would be Grand Rapids, if it could be Brainerd, whatever, we'd hold a meeting in the same town at the same time, and they'd have maybe 50, and we'd have 300, to fight the federal government, to keep it under local control, to keep it out of the federal system, that we formed what's called the Headwaters Board.
It was a massive undertaking, requiring eight counties to be in agreement. Through their hard work and support, the Mississippi Headwaters Board was created in 1980. Since then, the Board has rigorously acted to protect the first 400 miles of the Mississippi River. But it didn't stop there. Since its chartering, the Mississippi Headwaters Board, in cooperation with the eight counties, has instituted several programs that have enhanced the safety of the water, made travel down the Mississippi an enjoyable experience, created navigation signage for those who enjoy paddling in a canoe or kayak on the Mississippi River, and supported the effort of establishing parks along the river. One of the first tasks the Mississippi Headwaters Board took on was local zoning.
Zoning is, it's kind of like a bulldozer. In the right hand, it can do a lot of good, it can shape, make things very pretty, but in the wrong hands, or in, if it's misused or guided correctly, it can cause a lot of damage. So, that's why county commissioners were given this responsibility. That is something so unique about this Mississippi Headwaters Board, is that they have county commissioners, and they're here to protect one thing, the Mississippi River.
Yet, with eight counties needing to be in agreement on something as fundamental to the rights of landowners and their governmental units, disagreements happened, so there needed to be a way to settle disputes.
In the 80s, there was a lot of fighting going on between the Board and counties and state and other agencies, not out of ill will, but just trying to understand what that law meant. Who had, we, we had our jurisdiction set, but if a county had something that maybe was less stringent than the Mississippi Headwaters Board plan, who won? In the early 80s, it went to a district court, and it was decided that the Mississippi Headwaters Board trumps all county regulations. And you got to remember, in this time, some of the regulations that were put on by the Mississippi Headwaters Board were new, they were progressive. Whereas today, we look at them and say, "Well, that's pretty, makes common sense," but at that time, it wasn't common sense.
Once the jurisdictional duties were made clear by the court, individual Board members were able to act with clarity, not just being another layer of government, but being a watchdog, an overseer, because the Mississippi Headwaters Board is actually a regulatory agency. Where the 1980s were a period of zoning, the 1990s were about blending zoning regulation with education and community programs. This included a River Watch program, which got students involved in testing the river. There was also a River of Defense Network, which provided spill containment equipment to some of the cities along the river, in case there was some kind of toxic spill. In addition, a guidebook was developed to help those visiting the river to learn about its history, what people could expect to find in the areas around the river, and the importance of protecting our natural resources. Due to funding deficiencies in the early 2000s, it was decided that an executive secretary would be kept rather than an executive director to work only with the regulatory zoning authority of the Board. This led to the Mississippi Headwaters Board being perceived as a duplicative since county zoning regulations were somewhat compatible with the comprehensive plan. So, in the early 2010s, the Mississippi Headwaters Board made a change in direction, and held a series of strategic planning sessions to determine its role going forward. It was at that time that a new executive director job description was written. The Board wanted someone who had entrepreneurial skills and was willing to take risks. After interviewing several candidates, they chose Tim Terrell, who understood the need for more aggressive initiatives to add to existing regulatory programs in order to protect the quality of the water of the Mississippi River itself.
So, one of the unique things that we started right out of the gate was an idea to assess the watersheds for risk, and how much risk factors are on the Mississippi River on these small watersheds that drain directly to the Mississippi River. It was pretty unique at its time because we know in this area up here, it's beautiful place, if you look at it from Google Maps, it's all green, so everybody thinks, "Whoa, there's not much to do up here." But what we did is, we assessed and we found out quite a bit of risk, different disturbed land, how much percent public land were in these watersheds, what did we need to get to to call this watershed protected, and we developed a whole chart and process.
From that study, organizational systems and programs like One Watershed, One Plan began implementing the systematic breakdown of watersheds on a larger scale. In addition, Mississippi Headwaters Board implemented a regional stormwater assessment in several of the cities with frontage on the Mississippi. It allows cities and counties to determine sites where stormwater runoff can be cleaned prior to it entering the Mississippi River.
That's what the Mississippi Headwaters Board does. Because it has a leadership role in, in what it does, it creates a context by which things can get done, and by which other implementation organizations can use.
Another program taken on by the Mississippi Headwaters Board are the problems caused by aquatic invasive species, which includes zebra mussels, Eurasian water, millfoil, and others. To help educate the public, the Mississippi Headwaters Board created Facebook and Twitter sites.
So far, it's been one of our successful social media programs. We've got about 30,000 followers on Facebook and over 7,000 on Twitter, so we are doing really good with reaching people before they get it.
For people traveling on the Mississippi River, a series of navigational signage was produced to allow the recreationalists to know where they are and how long it will take them to get from one upstream river landing to another downstream landing.
When you go to a lake, you pull up, you know where that spot is, you go on the lake, you recreate all day, and you come back to that same spot. You can't do that on the Mississippi River. There's DNR landings and accesses where you can access a landing, but you go downstream, and most people have absolutely no idea how long it's going to take them to get from one landing to the next.
To help paddlers enjoy the Mississippi River and familiarize them with the navigational signage, the Mississippi Headwaters Board created the concept of resource-tainment events, where people can travel the river and enjoy an educational or entertainment event at the end of their journey. Local county and city tourism organizations partnered with the Mississippi Headwaters Board to host these annual events, and there is a coordinated effort to promote these events across the first 400 miles of the Mississippi River.
What I like about working for the Mississippi Headwaters Board is, there's environmental concern, the natural, the recreational, the cultural, the scientific, and historical value that we want to protect of the Mississippi River, but there's also the civic part that comes into it. County commissioners with their wisdom, they're able to take that, what we're doing, and put it in perspective.
And keeping perspective is so important, because it's the greatest river in the land, it comes down to caring about the river and its importance to our lives. Members of the Mississippi Headwaters Board, working with those living along its path, understand the importance of the river, the quality of its water, the land around it, and the experience of those who use it.
Why should the average person care that the Mississippi River is here? Does it matter in your day-to-day life? Probably not. Does it trigger your imagination? Does it remind you that we're connected from one place to another, that you can start up here in the pines and go down to the bayous and still be connected because of this river? You know, if you're a geologist, a river is just a drain, it's really not the significant part of the landscape. But for us, it's visible, and it really reminds us of who was here before, where we're going, where we can be.
You know, water is something that every one of us needs, you know, a huge percent of our body is made of water. Where does it come from? We don't, we are, nobody's making more of it, we only have what we have. And so, to protect the Mississippi is to protect not just trade, but a major source of drinking water, which protects the health and welfare of everyone that lives up and down that river, from here all the way down to New Orleans. I think education is important about the river, so people know why we want to give it some room, room to filter, and a room to provide habitat, and room so that if you have a house on the river, you aren't on a bend where you're going to get wiped out every time you have a spring flood. Just knowledge is really important. But the Mississippi River is the lifeblood, the main artery of the United States.
All right, so, that's kind of the video that we produced, just about our formation. It was fun getting everyone together, former MHB directors, and just asking questions, like, "I read about this, what does this mean, what, what happened back in the 90s?" and all that. But one of the things that we worked on when I was first hired here, I came out with this puzzle piece, it was back in 2014, it says, "Mississippi Headwaters Board, Context and Connecting," and that's kind of what we do. But, you know, recently, I was looking at, well, how can we define our identity? Because a lot of people create vision statements for their organizations, they make it nice and flowery, and then they go home, and next week, they can't even remember it. So, what could be something that's unifying, that we could remember? And so, I thought of the idea of, we're known as being innovative and creative, what's a figurative example? Well, I thought of, how about salt? So, I'm just going to pass these around, or Jed, you could pass this around, I've got some salt packets there, to kind of give you a visualization, and let me show you why I chose salt. Well, salt's a preservative, and we're trying to preserve the Mississippi River, I think that's a great connection right there, but it's unlike any other seasoning, so it can be duplicated, but here's kind of the wisdom, it must be applied before it's useful, just can't sit around, it, salt has to be applied. Salt is shaken and sprinkled, but never poured, so you don't want to be too involved. Where do you, where do you back off, where do you come forward? You know, that's all, that's where county commissioners help guide me as far as what, you know, how, how, to what extent should we be involved? Because we, too much salt ruins food, and we, and we want to know where that role is and that. And then we talk about, salt adds flavor, but it's not noticed. Nobody ever went to Thanksgiving dinner and said, "You know, that was the best tasting salt I ever had." Nobody. It's a flavor, it's an enhancer, but it's not the main chorus. And so, we want to add a zest to your work, you know, something that can't be, is impossible to achieve without us. And that's kind of what we've done in some of our things, is, things can get done with, with or without us, but with us, it just adds a flavor to it, a zest that we can, you know, bring another aspect to it that maybe wasn't realized. So, I conclude and say, you know, come work with us, we've got a lot of opportunity, but because we do new and exciting things, it's uncharted territory, the outcome's probably going to be uncertain, but it's going to be an adventure every step of the way, and that's kind of what we try to focus on. So, questions or comments about the video, or to me, anything stand out to you in this presentation?
With those kayaks, where were they putting in at?
What?
Those kayaks, where was it, where were they putting in at on the river?
Sure, so, we put those signs up on, we put them at Kiwanis Park in Brainerd, we put it up in Palisade, we're actually doing it on, in trying to get every county, because what happens is, if people pull in, they, they see the access, they don't know where it leads to, so they're not going to go on their phone, they don't even know the website. So, we put a map of, "You are here," you know, it's like walking into the Mall of America, "You are here," and here's all the shops, right? But if you didn't have that sign, you wouldn't know where you're at. So, we put that map there, and then we put a map, "You are here," and then downstream, it says, "Exit here," and we tell how many miles it is. And we tell how many miles it is, and what's more important, we say about how many hours it will take you to paddle. Because you don't care how many miles it is, you just care how long it's going to take you. And are you going to have lunch afterwards, or, you know? Because after you're done paddling, you know, people kind of, there's the people that like to go out into the wilderness and experience that, but more people, you know, they, the care idea of camping is taking their whole house with them on wheels. And so, they want to enjoy that adventure, but when they get out, they want to be five minutes away from Starbucks or Caribou. You know, that's just kind of how we are as the average person. And so, we put that signage up, and then we did the idea of, you can actually scan the sign, and it will follow you like Google Maps down the river, so you'll never be lost. So, the map that's on the sign is now the map on your phone, and you're able to go around. And then we did the idea of, I coined the word "resource attainment," which is resource plus entertainment. And we're holding things last year, events last year, Aiken County had a paddle, they paddled for about two hours, and they had beer, whiskey, and wine tasting at the end, so a social event. There was over 80 people, they had to shut down the event one week before, because too many people were applying for it. So, the idea of people who just kind of want to show up for an event, and then do some type of social activity afterwards, we're just getting them used to the Mississippi River, because once they're there, they're going to say, wow, this is an untapped resource. I mean, look how clean this water is. The Mississippi that Mark Twain talked about is not the Mississippi up here. It's very clean and clear, and we've got a national treasure that, you know, most people don't go, you know, visit. And so, you know, and that's the whole idea, we're keeping stats on that for how much economic activity did we gain? Not just how many people, but how much economic activity? And most people said anywhere from 20 to 30 bucks they'd spend after the event, or they would spend anywhere from 70 to 100 bucks, depending if they got a hotel, you know, or so like that. So, we're cracking that to show, it's not just a fun event that we want to do, it's also about generating economic activity, and we've got the resource. We didn't pay anything for the Mississippi River, it's already here. So, we just have to, you know, just use it and get people familiar with it. So, we're doing that in different counties, and trying to put signage up. We don't want to get people lost, so, and we're not doing it on every access, we're just doing it on ones where people can kind of get familiar, or they'll go to a park, and then they'll see the sign or something like that, and then they'll say, well, this makes sense, I'll do it next week or so like that. Because this isn't for the people who plan their trip, this is for someone like me who shows up and goes, I wonder where that leads to. Yeah, that's what it's really for.
The scenery was lovely. Makes me wonder if we'll ever get there.
Are you, are you putting up anything at Itasca?
Itasca State Park?
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's, actually, I talked to, I want to say Courtney Cox, but it's Connie Cox. Courtney's the one from Friends. But, and we're looking at doing one, there's a little place that goes from there to Goldsvig Landing, and it's very narrow, so, you know, it's probably hard to get lost, but it's probably a half-hour trip, but we want to put up signage there, so people could, you know, show up and do that as well, and just take a quick trip. You start getting into the upper parts of the watershed, you've got the river going this way and this way, we don't want to get people lost, so we, we're a little bit careful about that. But, yeah, we're doing that, and we're doing some in Beltrami, Cass, pretty much all the counties. So, yeah, we're trying to promote that as well.
The Mississippi only runs a few miles through Hubbard County.
Right, right.
It's public land on both sides of the river, except for one parcel, so it's not going to be able to do a whole lot in our county, but...
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm going to talk to a guy who, actually, his father was Goldsvig, and he's a kind of, what do you call that, an outfitter. And I just want to talk to him, so where do people like to gather and congregate and do things? And I'm going to try to find that information from him, because he lives up here, and maybe look at opportunities as well. But, you know, just some things that, you know, we worked with the DNR on this, we're working with this, and then the whole idea is just exploding with these events. There's going to be one in Itasca, Aiken, Brainerd, and there was, this, this next year, and I actually created a website, webpage on April 15th, we're going to launch, where you can go to it, look at all the events happening in the first 400 miles, and you can click and you can add it to your phone as a thing. Because once you get it on your phone, now you're comparing everything else you do. And these events are, I think they're going to be really popular, and everybody adds, the county adds their own flavor to it, and it just, it just is a nice blending of county and a regional organization, kind of working together to promote tourism, and also protection of the Mississippi River. And it's kind of fun, too.
Anything else? Thank you, Tim.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Highway and Survey.
Good morning. First on our list, we've got set dates and locations for upcoming five-year road construction program meetings and public hearings for the continuation of the local option sales tax. Every other year, we've been doing these meetings, usually in June, we do one in the south end of the county, typically Parker Rapids area, and one in the north end. So, just wanted to bring that to you and see if you were ready to set dates for those meetings. I looked at some of the township meetings, they're, they're all over the board, they're Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, so whatever your...
And these are normally in the early evening?
Yeah, 7 o'clock, I think we usually start them.
So, the 13th of June, we have the board equalization.
I suppose Tuesdays get a little long for you, if you've got board meetings, work sessions, whatever.
Well, if I remember, in the past years, have we all shown up? I've only gone to one of them, and so, even the northern part, Ted, instead of you coming down here, if you wish, you could...
Yeah, I think a couple of years ago, it was in La Porte.
Yeah, so we can split, because we don't all need to be there.
Correct, correct, yep. As long as you see it once, you know, then you're going to, you're going to act on that following the meeting, so some commissioners attend both, just based upon questions that may come in, but others choose to attend one.
I know, I always have an event on the 14th of June.
Well, how about if we do the Parker Rapids one on the 7th?
That's fine.
Which would be, that's a Tuesday, or we could do it Monday, the 6th, whichever the board wants, and then Ted, since you're up in the north direction.
Yeah, we've done, we've done Rockwood, we've done La Porte, we've done...
The week of the 13th maybe works best for me, or the last week of June, which would be the 27th through the 30th.
I think we've done them on Monday nights before, haven't we?
Yep, we've done, we've done some on Mondays, yeah.
Should we, should we try the 6th? What is that? Jeff, is there anything on the calendar that you're not? Okay, so we'll do the 6th in Parker, here at the boardroom? Does that sound all right with everybody?
This works good.
Okay. At 6:00 or, what time?
6:00 is good.
Is it 6:00, or what time do we usually have them, Jed?
7:00, I thought we started them.
7:00?
We could do 6:00, that's, 6:00 probably gives people...
7:00 is better, yeah.
7:00 is better, yeah.
And if people work and want to come here, 7:00 might be a better time.
Yeah, because there might be some that this meeting works better, even though they live up in the north, so it'll give them some time to get here.
Okay.
Would you agree on 7:00?
7:00.
And then Ted, you already have a meeting on the 13th, you know?
Yeah, so I'm looking, maybe a Wednesday, or Wednesday or Thursday evening? Friday evenings is kind of hard, people are already thinking about the weekend.
Right.
Especially if we have green grass.
Yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday would be fine, I am gone the 15th and 16th for a conference, but...
So, should we go then the 8th? Get everything done in the first week there?
I think that would be fine, huh? You good with that?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, 8th would be fine. Do you have a choice up north? I can contact that township and make sure that their town hall is available for that night.
Yeah, you know, thinking about the town halls up there, I know Rockwood would maybe be a good one. It's not, that's kind of more northwest, though, not so centrally located, though.
And we were just, were we there at our last one? It's one of the last two, we were at Rockwood.
And like, yeah, like I said, La Porte was, or, yeah, La Porte was two years ago.
Okay, so, yeah, then the one before that was Rockwood, yeah?
I'm trying to think of what would be, Hard Lake.
Hard Lake works, we've done Helga before.
Okay. And I was thinking, I don't know, like Lake George or Guthrie, those are both not so far north, and they're both kind of in the center. Lake George, I guess, is getting to the west, but...
Yeah, it's pretty central, you want to try for Lake George?
Sure.
Okay, on the 8th. I will contact them and just confirm with you that those dates work for everybody. So, we'll do that again at 7:00.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks. Next is review and approve resolution to acquire the necessary right-of-way for Project SAP 029-607-009. This is the Casas 7 construction that starts just a little north of Casas 40, up to the end of the pavement on County Road 91. And we want to put a turn lane in, coming from the north, turning onto County 24. And in order to do so, we need a little bit of that land, so it's just one landowner, we don't, we don't perceive any issues getting the right-of-way. In a worst-case scenario, we cannot do the turn lane if right-of-way is going to be an issue, but this right-of-way does give us the ability to pursue that, and if need be, actually use eminent domain proceedings, but I don't foresee that being a problem. We're, we're looking at, these bids are due on the 13th, and this construction will happen this year.
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. And how do you decide what the land is worth?
Well, you use, you know, the county's market value is based upon comp sales, and so for the value of this, it's a very small taking.
Right.
And so, we're able to use that for a minimum damage acquisition on that.
One question, you already talked to the owner, and they're, they're good with...
We, we don't know that.
Oh, I don't know yet.
But it's, no, it's in a, it's in the little quadrant of the intersection there, that there's no, there's no usable property there. You know, we have the easement out to 33 feet now, and I believe this will be out to, is it 50 or 60?
60.
60 feet out.
I looked at an aerial photo of it, didn't look like there'd be a problem.
No, no, and like I say, I mean, you know, worst-case scenario, if we had to forego the turn lane, I think that they'll agree that the turn lane is necessary and a good deal, but, yeah.
Got a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have another review and approve resolution to enter into an agreement with MINDOT and the DNR, and I got to give you a little bit of information of what's transpired with this, is we, we received this agreement from MINDOT. This is for the project up near Itasca, putting the tunnel under there for the Heartland Trail Extension. And so, it's a MINDOT high, trunk highway, but a Minnesota DNR project, and of course, they need to use a couple of our county-state aids for a detour to do that. They'll have to shut it down to put that, that box culvert or that tunnel in. And so, MINDOT typically is able to come to us and say, you know, we need to take over these roads, and when they take them over as a detour, then they become the trunk highway for that period of time, and so they're responsible for it, they are the road jurisdiction on that. This one is a little bit different when it's actually a DNR project, and so, the DNR and MINDOT are actually discussing how they need to go about this, rather than maybe do a three-party agreement. It may be an agreement that's just between the DNR and us, and then the DNR and the DOT need a separate agreement for the construction. So, basically, this agreement's not going to happen, it doesn't sound like it anyway, but it'll be a different one that will require the approval of the county. And so, we can either table this, and I'll bring the actual agreement back to you for the approval, or you could authorize my signature along with Mr. Cadwell's for entering into that agreement. It's basically just to, you know, the gas tax formula is still going to be the same deal, the duration of it's still going to be the same, and so, it'll be a lot of this information, but it will be a different agreement. So, if that's a necessity, maybe, Jeff, you know, if, if, do we need an actual approval for an agreement number, or?
I think the board can authorize an approval based on the terms, once they're completed and reviewed by county attorney, and allow us to sign them after that, if they want to do that now, just to not have that two- or three-week gap when we actually get the paperwork.
So, Tom and Skip, if I recall correctly, they're not planning to shut down the road until September, and it was just for four, probably four days? That was, it was talked about at the trails.
Yeah, so like this agreement, if you look at it, it's got a duration of 15 days on it, now that's an expected duration for that. The actual reimbursement will be based upon the actual days that it gets closed, so, yeah, I'm sure it'll be less than that, but that is what they put in here.
I wouldn't have a problem approving Jed and Jeff signing something.
Do you have a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Charles, thank you, Tom. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those? Motion carried.
And then we got review and approve bid for Project CP 29-22-04. This is crack ceiling, this is one of the budgeted items we, we put in there that we had not done for, for several years. Typically, our in-house staff does all of our crack ceiling, but we have a lot of miles out there that we're behind on, so we thought, we're going to, we're going to see what kind of bids we get. So, we put out about 44 miles worth of crack ceiling for this year. And so, we put the proposal out, we got six bids back, or six quotes, I guess, no, they are bids. And Camco Inc. out of Dassault, Minnesota, was the low at $107,750.50. Being we're kind of new to this game, and we've usually looked at our, our own forces for doing it, we didn't know exactly what to expect, but we budgeted right around $80,000. Now, you've got increased prices with the fuel, of course, and the, any petroleum products for that matter, so it was not surprising at this time of this year to see the bids come in as such. But we would like to get those 44 miles done, our in-house crew will still be doing some crack ceiling, but this will be the majority of the work that we do this year. We hope it gets us caught up. If we like the work, and we think that it's cost-effective, we'll, we'll proceed in the future, but we would like to get caught up on this, this amount of miles, and so I would recommend that we approve the low bid.
I know it's quite a swing in price.
Yeah, you know, and I haven't talked to these individually, we kind of wonder if some of these maybe included the material as well. The proposal was done as though we have the material on hand, we'd already ordered X amount for this year, and so we're providing the material, this is labor and traffic control only. And so, kind of wondering if some of those didn't have the material included, because it, that's a big swing, yeah?
All righty.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Dave. I'll second. Okay, Tom?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Very good, then to just have one extra thing, last year, we were able to do a road tour with a few of the commissioners, wondering if we want to do that again this year, and whether we want to pick a date, I can, I'm sure I can line up with Transit again to, to get a bus, and we take a look at what we did last year and some things that we have planned for this year. The only recommendation I would make is that we need a little bit more time, we were pretty rushed through that last year. So, probably start at 8:00 instead of 9:00, and plan for a return of, say, around 3:30, 4:00, something like that.
I'd like to go down the road that you redid.
What number is that again?
That's number 3, yes.
That was very informational, I would, that was very worth our time, I thought.
I know the residents that use it are really happy.
Wasn't any rust left on the bus, was there?
No, I don't think so, no. No, I think, Tom, I think you had the quote of the day, you said something like, this isn't my district, but I support the project.
It was, you had us convinced.
Yeah, it's a good deal, you know, it's nice, you get to see some different areas that you're not necessarily familiar with, so I thought it was a fun day, so if you want, you don't have to set a date today, but maybe just fire me an email that you would, you'd be interested in that, and maybe I can send a few dates out, I don't have to set that today.
Would you, would you do it, the May work session? So that you're picking a day that, I don't know what that speaks for your afternoons, but we could have a, if, I'm not aware of anything major on the May work session.
I usually have, uh, mental health board.
Okay.
And we're probably looking at May anyhow. Roads would be better and?
Yeah, I think we were in April last year, but we didn't quite have this, so.
No, I take that one back. I see that it's a following day I have that. So yeah, I'm, I'm good for it.
Oh, for, so May the tenth?
Yeah.
It'd be nice on a Tuesday because I always X out Tuesdays because it's a good idea.
That, that's in my mind and I'm, I'm hoping to go with this time. Um, Tuesdays, I don't have, I don't put anything on in the afternoon.
So you're saying we would not do the work session?
We would, we would do the work session if there was anything, but if we have anything brief, we would, uh, we would do it. But if you were talking about starting at nine, we're starting at nine, you know, and if it ended up being, getting on the bus at nine thirty and going, it's a place to start.
Yep.
Okay.
And we would, uh, we would invite the press again. They can.
What's that?
We invite the press for that.
Sure, yep. And that, I mean, the notification is super easy then. We just put it on the agenda for the work session.
Yep. Good.
They won't be able to attend by live stream. They'd have to.
You cover lunch?
Oh, yeah, we, we love lunch again. Yeah.
Okay.
And then the only thought is, is if we start the work session earlier that day?
We could start the work session earlier if we want to accommodate this. If you let, uh, Jed and I have some latitude with that and take a look and see what, what builds for the, I, I'm not aware of anything right now on the May work session, um, agenda. If we had anything, it'd be notices about, here's the upcoming, uh, things that I can handle, the administrative report on the first or third, um, Tuesdays too, related to upcoming planning for budgeting. If something comes up, we could certainly, we could certainly start a half hour early so that we can be on the road.
Okay. Everybody likes that idea?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Great. Thank you.
Do you want to add anything with projects? We got a couple of lettings that are set, uh, April thirteenth and April nineteenth.
Yeah.
For our two major paving projects. It's not great news coming back with Poteminas prices, but that's to be expected right now. So, um, we think we're, we're adequately budgeted and, uh, estimated. So it should, should be all right, but that'll be an interesting time. That's a couple decent sized projects for us. And then we got a couple smaller county ones that we'll do later.
I don't have anything else to add today.
That's all we got?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Sheriff, we could, uh, Sheriff Akis has a, in the consent agenda, we approved the reception of a boat and water safety grant. And he wants to spend that money. And he just got his, uh, materials in late yesterday. So if we could, uh, add him, sneak him into the agenda to look at that.
I appreciate if you could just entertain this. I'll hand these out. I don't have a regular time slot. But, um, I assume you did approve the resolution for the grant, um, the equipment grant. And with that, I did get, the quotes did come in after the deadline for submitting our agenda items. And, um, there'd be no cost, you know, no levy dollars expended on this. This comes direct, you know, from the grant. But, uh, we're trading in one of our older boats. I think it's, it's a ten-year-old boat and we're replacing it, um, with a new one. And this particular boat is, is one that they use mostly every day. It's a fifty horsepower motor on it. And, um, you'll see the two quotes. One from Bemidji Marine, um, for seventeen thousand, six fifty, six fifty. And then from Charlie's, twenty thousand, five forty-four. The amount of the grant, um, would cover the Bemidji Marine quote. And as you see, it's nearly three thousand dollars less. So I would ask approval, um, to be able to purchase that. We would get a early start on getting it, you know, decalled and, because spring is coming.
Is that a quote?
What's that?
Is that a quote? Spring is coming.
That is a quote. I promise you. It'll be here eventually. Lots of cars in the ditch today.
Yes, there were.
Hydroplaning left and right.
And you know what? Because I came seventy-one and two sheriff's cars were out there with their blink, you know, with their flashers on to warn us ahead of time. That was very helpful.
Yep.
Took me about, I left about, a little after seven thirty, thinking I might get here early and talk to you before the meeting. I got here, what, about five minutes to eight minutes to? White knuckles.
Yep, it's slow going. You, with that slush, like I say, it's a, you're subject to hydroplaning if you're not careful. It's all about positioning on the road and, and your speed right now, so.
Gain and the rut.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the low quote.
Sorry. Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for looking at that last minute. I appreciate that. So any, if you have any questions for me, otherwise I'll get out of your hair. Alright, thank you.
Environmental Services. Oh, no, excuse me. That one got omitted. Yep, you're up. Chip, sorry about that.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, we have a request, uh, to acquire, uh, the forty-six acres, uh, of Conservation Fund lands north of Emmaville, northwest of Emmaville. This is the land that is part of the six hundred acre patch of Conservation Fund lands that, uh, the Trust for Public Lands is acquiring, uh, through the Lassard-Sams dollars. Uh, and because this is also the parcel that we're looking at having the Itasca-Hartland Spur connection trail on, uh, we can't use the Lassard-Sams dollars. Um, so we're looking at, uh, we had the Conservation Fund, uh, kind of split this piece off and separated it out. And they're offering to sell that to us separately, uh, so we can use county dollars on it. And that way we can put that, uh, recreation trail on this parcel, um, and, and have that connection. So we're, we're guaranteed that we've got the connection, uh, for the Itasca-Hartland Connection Trail. Proposing to use, uh, forfeited, uh, uh, the Forest Development Fund dollars. Uh, and there's, there's, uh, over a million dollars in that account right now, so, uh, we have no problems with that. And we would manage this, uh, very similar to what we manage all of our other tax forfeited lands other than the fact that somewhere through that, that forty-six acres would be the state, uh, Itasca-Hartland Connection Trail, so.
Can you, can you explain, um, let's see, Jeff, if you go back up please to, um, um, something about the, the sale. So, so we purchased this and then, um, I know it's not eligible for pilt, but then you talked in here about possibly then taking them and being able to sell county land?
Right. If we were to take this, this, this parcel, forty-six acres, and exchange it with some tax forfeited land somewhere else. Then the tax forfeited status then goes on this forty-six acre parcel, which would then make it eligible for pilt. The parcel of tax forfeited land that we exchanged for then would become county fee land. That we could sell and that, you know, those dollars would go into, uh, the county coffers for, um, you know, whatever you want to use it for.
And did you have any land in your mind that we could?
Not at this moment, I don't know. Um, because the, the, the land exchange process is rather lengthy and cumbersome.
Okay.
Um, there's, uh, we would have to, um, go through the appraisal process. We have to get a, uh, an approved appraisal from, of both the tax forfeited parcel and of this, this parcel. Um, and the, the DNR requires, uh, a level four appraiser, which kind of bumps the, the, the price up a little bit. The parcels also have to be within ten percent of value of each other. And so you'd have to kind of search around to find the parcel that would match the best. But, uh, it can be done, but it's typically at least a year process in order to do that. So it'd be into twenty twenty-three by the time we ever get done with this, but it's, it's possible to do it that way.
I have a question about that. Um, is there maybe a parcel that's, that is getting pilt, but at the same time it's not producing much in timber? You know, like maybe marshland or, or, you know, to just attract, it's not giving us timber revenues like you would like. Where this would be a better one to have pilt plus timber revenues.
Yeah, and there's, you know, there's likely some parcels that are, are, you know, in, in order to get the value up to what this parcel would be, um, you know, you'd probably be looking at, at higher acreage. And in everything, of course, you know, all this, every time you go through this, you have to, uh, get DNR approval. So the DNR would have their opportunity to review the parcels and, and, uh, you know, they can turn it down and say, you got to find a different parcel, but, um, we could, we could certainly try and find something.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, if you can get both pilt and timber revenue off this forty-six acres, exchange for one that's only getting pilt, one, and it might make sense.
Yeah.
So in the background, I handed out. I'm working with Jack and GIS to, um, to put together a map to show you where the concentrations are of, of taxable land by type and, and tax exempt land by type so that you can see that. And I think that that endeavor will help us identify those landlocked parcels that don't make sense. You know, maybe there's a privately owned parcel that, that we're acquiring that makes more sense as conservation land. Maybe that we have conservation land that is more accessible to developable spaces. So to answer this general question that we have every time, I'm trying to provide a little more context on this. And this is work that Jack is doing before he generates the maps. And we consolidated the fifty different type of tax classifications down into five taxable and five non-taxable. Um, and because there's split class, so a parcel will have multiple tax classifications against it. You'll notice that four hundred ninety-six and two hundred and sixty-six adds up to more than six hundred and thirty-nine. It just does, um, because some things have, have multiple records on them. So I think when we, when we go through them and ferret this out, we'll see, um, we'll see it a little more clearly. But it's interesting. I thought it was interesting to note that we have two hundred and twenty thousand acres of vacant taxable land, which is almost as much as we have in tax exempt land. So there's already privately owned, there's as much privately owned undeveloped property in the county as there is publicly owned tax exempt property in the county. So I just want to, I want to share this. When we could look at the pictures, I think it will help us identify that. I think the pictures may also help us start on that list that you're asking Chip for in, are there things that are publicly owned, that are county owned, that would be better off in the, in the developable, in the, in the private sector owned and taxed, uh, lands? And that will get us down the process. If we have some idea, you don't want to, it's a cumbersome process, so, so, so to do it, one forty acre parcel at a time would be really, um, a difficult thing to do. To identify twenty parcels where we're going to, we're going to trade things back and forth and walk through that process, which might be eighteen to thirty-six months to get it done. I've, I've participated in those and, and it's, it's a long way to get through that. So you would, would really want to do a good countywide summary and identify those and do it once, um, rather than do it parcel by parcel. Um, so I think we're, we're getting there. But what's important to, to note relative to the no net loss policy is really we want to be looking at this, this large number down here. And then we also want to look at the tax capacity as it, as it is related to that. So those are the two elements. And, and then the last thing that you always have to evaluate relative to no net loss is perceived value. Right? So if we convert this four hundred acres, what's the perceived value in that in conservation and/or other economic activity that we think is going to happen? So, um, this one we've brought forward. This one's been moving forward a long time. It's, it's that part that we have to do because, um, because of the nature of the ownership. They can't buy it with the, with the other funds that they have. And it's the necessary piece to allow us for the right of way to get the rest of that connector trail through, isn't it?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's the driver because, um, the intent with the Hartland Spur going through there is not going to be to share the existing snowmobile trail, is it? It's going to be a separate trail?
No, it will be, that will become the snowmobile trail.
So will it remain a, the existing snowmobile trail will remain a snowmobile trail?
Um, well, um, the, I think the Hartland or the, uh, the, the snowmobile trail in this case, at least in that area, will, um, use the existing Itasca-Hartland Spur connection. I don't know if they're talking about eliminating some of those snowmobile trails or not. I don't think that discussion has been had yet. But the idea is that the Itasca-Hartland Spur will become a snowmobile trail, uh, up to Itasca.
It'll be a lot like the Hartland multi-use?
Yep.
It'll still connect the same stuff?
Right. Yeah, it, it would be a bit duplicative because there's, there's certainly a number of trails that kind of head in that direction. But how much of that trail system will be shifted over to this state trail, I don't know.
So you would be talking basically from, a trail from, uh, Pine Lakes Trail south down to Emmaville might disappear and be replaced with a different one that will come in to the Pine Lakes Trail and it, cross it at a different spot. But the northern piece, north of the Pine Lakes Trail will still go north to Lake George.
Yep. Yep. Um, the Conservation Fund is asking that, uh, if we do plan to do this, if we would like to try and get this accomplished by June fifteenth, which is the same timeframe as Trust for Public Lands is planning to, uh, close on, on the other five hundred and fifty-four acres. Uh, they're also asking a couple of questions. Do we want, um, a, would we want to use the same title company as the Trust for Public Lands? Which I, you know, unless we want to use Hubbard County abstract, uh, just because they're here. Otherwise, uh, the, the, the title company that they're proposing is, uh, First Financial Title Agency of Minnesota. And they also wanted to know if we would want a title commitment, which is basically just a statement of, of what's included in the sale and, and some of the aspects of that. And then if a thousand dollars deposit would be okay. So a couple of questions there that they would like answered. And I didn't feel that I wanted to make those decisions for the county board.
If there's likely not much of any savings for using the same title company, then I would prefer using a local title company.
Is there a consolidation? Would this be included in the same closing or would it still be a separate closing?
I believe it would be a separate closing because we're talking two different agencies and, and two different funding sources.
So I think we could verify those facts and bring that all back to a future meet, to the April nineteenth meeting. Verify that with, um, I think the question's relative to whether we want title commitment. We can have all those things identified. We know the scope of this. We know what it's going to look like. And just the, the actual details we can hammer out and decide on April nineteenth.
Is there any, uh, urgency in getting the thousand dollars down?
They didn't mention anything as far as, they just asked if that would be a suitable amount.
And I'm assuming that's like earnest money?
Yeah.
And I don't know if we would be, do we need to authorize that today?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I think, uh, I think general consensus is we're going to move forward with this and we just want to, we just want to determine the, the route of the county's title acquisition and closing for this, um, before we make a final vote. And I would want Jonathan to weigh in on that.
So do we need a, a motion?
You can make a motion to table to April nineteenth.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion then that we table this until the April nineteenth meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Um, one other item, just want to remind you that next Monday, the eleventh, I believe it's the eleventh, uh, is our spring timber auction. We have the ten tracks that are on there, so, uh, we'll have that, uh, right here in this room at nine o'clock on Monday. If there's no questions for me, thank you, Chip.
Thank you very much.
Finance. The next item under finance was on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
To, uh, approve a resolution accepting Dropbox grant, uh, for the installation of video monitoring um, relative to the new, um, the proposed standards for video surveillance of drop boxes related to election ballots. I wanted to pull this because there's plenty of administrators and commissioners who are saying, well, if they're going to put this requirement on us, then we're not going to accept drop boxes. People can do mail-in balloting or they can bring them in the, they can bring them in the office. So I wanted you to have the opportunity to ask and answer that question before you accepted this, this. Again, in, in my mind, just because there's money that comes with it, doesn't mean it's a good process.
That was, that was one of my, one of my concerns. I know if you do do a Dropbox, it is state, state law now that it has to be done a certain way. But that didn't say that, doesn't mean you have to do it.
Yeah.
But I talked to Kay prior to the meeting and we do have two drop boxes. So if we're going to use the two drop boxes, why would we not want video? Because if you look at what happened at the last election, the fraud supposedly, because there's, there's, there's proof of this, that people did multiple drops at the Dropbox. So I'm not saying I support this, but Kay said we're already using two drop boxes.
Many county administrators are suggesting that they're going to discontinue the use of drop boxes for ballots? And communicate that? So that's, that was the, that was the question that I wanted you to, to think about before we accept the grant, to say that we're going to do this. The thing that's yet to be resolved, I think, as I understood at the AMC update, um, yesterday, is related to who's responsible for the? is related to who's responsible for the data. And they're planning on saying, if we're going to do this, I don't think it's all been approved yet. But if we're going to do this, that the state would be responsible for that data in the cloud storage, and we wouldn't be responsible, and I don't know how administratively it's, it creates a nightmare. A whole lot of counties have just simply said, if you're going to put these kind of requirements on it, we're just going to pull our Dropbox's.
The other, the other piece of that is if this continues, that funding's not going to be there in the future. So now you're going to be responsible for maintaining these cameras and all this stuff in perpetuity. So there is an argument for removing the Dropbox's.
And even if they're being videoed, so you see somebody coming repeatedly to it, by the time you find that out, it's already, the damage, if any, has already been done?
And with mail-in balloting, there's, you know, there's more than ample opportunity to mail your absentee ballot in. I mean, does a county need to absorb extra expense down the line?
Well, Kay did say that, you know, it, it, during the election time, when they were using the Dropbox, the staff had to go down three to, was it three to four times a day to empty it, because it's not large anyway.
Well, and the, and the volume was such that it, it, it was necessary that we emptied both boxes that many times.
And they're both located here?
There's one right outside on the, the street, which is the big standalone, and then the one right on the building, which Shaw and I were talking earlier this morning. It's, it's a small box. I had hoped it would be larger, but we, during, you know, twenty twenty, we had to empty it three to four times a day.
You know, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to rationalize, you know, why people would use Dropbox over the other methods. And obviously, maybe during the middle of the pandemic, they just didn't want to interact with people in any way. But otherwise, there's multiple other options to get your ballot where it needs to go.
Yes, and as, as I recall, if I may, there, there were so many people that did not want to mail their ballots. They, they didn't mind dropping them off, they, they could bring them in, but since there was a Dropbox, they were happy to use the Dropbox. Right now, I, I, sorry I came in and I missed the first few sentences of your conversation, but the grant that we have is to help with security and twenty-four seven video surveillance of both Dropbox's, and that's fifteen thousand dollars a piece. So if we didn't accept the grant, we're still mandated to have video surveillance unless we were to remove the Dropbox's.
We don't have to remove the Dropbox's, we have to simply post that these are not for ballots.
Right, and I also do need to rename them and state that they are for ballots.
So, so if a person, you know, if we remove the Dropbox's for ballots and the person came in, could they drop them off at the security desk, or would they have to go through security to drop?
They'd have to go through security and drop them off at, with our election staff.
They have to, they have to drop them off with, with qualified election staff.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If it, if it's not going to a box, it has to come all the way into somebody who's qualified as an election staff.
I have another question on the location of them. The statute also says no election hearing campaigning within one hundred feet. So that means they need to be, they need to be at least a hundred feet away from any private residence, because any private residence would have the right to put a campaign sign.
Well, and it's, the courthouse is a precinct, so no campaigning near the courthouse. So the private residence.
You're saying the hundred, hundred feet is across the street?
Yeah, but, you know, for, for place to vote, you got, just got that one day that someone can't have a campaign sign within a hundred feet. For this, it'd be the entire period of the Dropbox.
Well, and, and we allow early voting, so absentee voting starts forty-six days prior, so. And that's here at the courthouse.
These would be the only locations you'd have now?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering, if you had any other location?
No, we don't.
Will we have, will we have anybody on the first floor that can accept these ballots?
Well, yes, our, our, the three gals down there now, and we may have additional staff, depending on the next couple of months. So in twenty twenty, we did have temporary staff hired. Twenty twenty, you know, we had, majority of our precincts were mail ballot and absentee, you know, out of thirteen-plus thousand ballots, over eight were either mail ballot or absentee, which we had to process here. That quantity was really more than we could handle with our team. Thankfully, we got the DS four fifty, which is the mass ballot counter. That's what saved us. And again, that was fifty percent funded by grant proceeds, but so that, so there will be the three downstairs, plus possibly one more. And in addition to the elections, they're still doing their own jobs, their regular daily jobs, with the license center and tax collection.
So the question for me comes down to, is the added responsibility of dealing with the data and the added expense of maintaining cameras in a Dropbox going forward, even though you get a grant on the first year, it's going to continue, is it worth the convenience, for the convenience? Is a trade-off worth it, when there's multiple other ways to, to get your ballot to where it has to go? I'm not sure that it's worth it.
Well, if I look at a person driving to drop it off, it would be, you know, get out of their car probably a minute and then go back. But it'd probably be five minutes to bring it in. It's, it's not a lot of time period, and it is a privilege to vote. And if people want to vote, they're going to go through that and.
And there's multiple other ways to vote.
There's multiple other ways.
Kind of a, yeah, it's a privilege and a responsibility to, to vote. And, and not, thinking about my district, the northern part of the county, I don't know too many people that would drive all the way down here to deliver their ballot either way.
There, there are some that make a point to drive here to deliver their ballots, or even use the Dropbox, or bring them in. Twenty twenty, the Farden that went mail ballot, though, except for the board that I think voted to go mail ballot, everyone else was very upset about that. They're back to in-person. So, and there were, I think, carloads that came down to make the point that they wanted to be voting in person.
One of the, one of the negatives of video surveillance too is when it comes time where somebody has to actually parse through all of those videos trying to find out that piece of information that you're looking for is an extensive amount of time. And from my experience, when it's talked about, nobody really enjoys doing that, because it takes a lot of time.
The, the video surveillance, the, the, the safety and security of everybody that's registered to vote having one ballot, the ballot is, is linked to them. I mean, the possibility of somebody voting twice is really very difficult, unless they come in and they vote and they ask for another ballot, and then we should catch that. We have, the checks and balances within the system. In, in my mind, the video isn't going to provide us, isn't going to provide us anything. There's, there's not saying that I don't bring my ballot in, and then the next day my wife says, well, bring my ballot in. So there I'm showing up at the, and dropping two off. And then my father-in-law says, well, bring my ballot in. Well, you know, there's still three good ballots by three registered voters, but one person's dropping them off. So I don't really think that this gives us any protection that we don't already have relative to election security and making sure that, you know, that the ballots are cast by people who are certified and registered to vote in the county. And it's kind of a pushback on just one more statewide regulation of saying, well, you're going to, you're going to have to do this. Oh, okay. At, at the, at the MACA meeting in February, everybody is simply saying, if, if, if I were making the choice, I'd just simply say, we're not taking, we're not doing Dropbox's. That, that's the simplest thing to do. It eliminates the concern, it eliminates the need, and it eliminates the additional expense in administration.
Being a proponent of not only voting in person, but vote, voting in person with a voter ID, Dropbox's just don't fit into that picture at all.
I would agree with you, Tom.
And I, and we would have to do a, a lot of, of public education. We would have to sign those Dropbox's, you know, there's certainly, if somebody wants to drop in their, their tax payment, we're certainly happy to take that. We use them for other purposes, they make sense in that way. But they would have to be simply signed and say, you know, do not drop them here, I, you know, and we'd have to have a policy related to that, and in order for a policy would be, that would be a scratched ballot. But that would, could possibly be a, a problem.
So we, we don't need to act on this, right? It'll just die, or do we need to make a motion not to do this, or what, how do we handle this?
So I don't know what the timeline is on this. If, if we, if today's the.
I don't have it in front of me. We could table it to the next meeting, that would, I think it's May sixteenth.
To, to receive funding, we have to have, have a decision to the Secretary of State by May sixteenth, so.
I don't think tabling it's going to change, change my position whatsoever. I mean, if we don't adopt this resolution, then obviously we must remove the existing Dropbox's.
The only reason I would ask to table is that I would ask for us to come up with, as staff, as a plan on how we're going to sign and note and communicate to the public about not having Dropbox's for ballots. And with that, I would want to make sure that we include Jonathan in the conversation as well.
And even with all the signage in the world, there's still going to be somebody that's going to drop your ballot.
Yes, there is, and there are going to be, there are going to be people who.
We should have a policy for.
We would have to have a policy related to that, yeah.
I guess if it was soon enough, Kay, Kay's office could.
Well, Kay's office doesn't want to have to, doesn't want to have to notify two hundred and fifty people who didn't follow instructions, that their vote hasn't been counted. And I don't, honestly, I don't know what our, what our responsibility is to that if we get somebody, if we get a spoiled ballot. So that's the only reason I would say that it would be worth tabling this to the nineteenth or the first meeting in May, just to allow us to research that. That, that primary question needs an answer, I think, before we make a, a policy decision on this level.
Can I add that when we do spoil the ballot, then we are required to contact that voter and issue another one?
So that we already, there already is an internal policy related to that?
Yeah, and that's set by the state. But, but that does really increase the level of work on our staff. So if that was the case, I think we would just try to be prepared so that we would have an adequate staff. But a lot of times, there's only so many things temporary staff can help with.
So could you just close the boxes for the, that time period? Or you'd have to just put great big lettering on there, no ballots received here or whatever?
That would be my proposal, would be just, just to change the signage and make it, if not permanent signage, very, very hard to remove signage, so that people would know that the Dropbox's are not for ballots.
So if I could add a little bit of history, when I started in fifteen, we were not using the Dropbox out here, that's the only one we had. And the board at that time had said, well, let's start using the Dropbox. So we, we got the signage on it, and that wasn't for elections, that was for tax payments and other official documents, mostly tax payments. And, you know, it, it's slowly, gradually taken off. I wouldn't want to take that service away, because I know once we got the security and then people stopped coming in altogether to bring in their tax payment. So that is a good service, I think, that we provide to the taxpayers of the county. And I think they would miss that service.
I agree.
So as far as closing, I, I'm not sure how we would go about that. It would be nice to have Jonathan's input.
Yeah, and that the second half payments would be around the election time.
Yes, yes, that October fifteenth date, and that is getting into peak election time, so it's very busy downstairs for us.
And November fifteenth for ag?
Yes.
Okay. So we need a motion to table?
Yeah, because it, it won't fundamentally change the position, but it will give these guys time to figure out how to handle it better.
I need to answer a couple of questions better for you than I can today.
So I'd, I'd move to table.
I'll second that.
May I ask?
Which meeting do you want to?
The first in May?
First of May?
I'm, I'm leaving on vacation, so I won't be here to help in any research or respond to questions.
And I will probably get some language from, so it'll be May third.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, there's a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who is the second?
Uh, Shaw. David and Shaw.
Okay.
Next on the agenda looks like Human Resources.
So we will need a motion to close the open meeting and to open a closed meeting?
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Give me just a second.
Oh, boy, that's quite a stack of papers.